Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Board of Education meeting for May the fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to order at this time. First on our agenda is to ask Ms. Carolyn Walker to lead us in pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, Mr. Oliver.
Boefer County Schools' mission statement. Boefer County Schools will provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success.
Thanks, sir. Next item is public comment, and Lisa has informed us that we do not have anybody, so we're gonna move right on. Now to item number two, the agenda. We have the agenda in front of us. I think there's gonna be a change. Dr. Phillips?
There is. We want to add just an adjustment to the school calendar for this year.
Okay. And where are you gonna place that at?
About five point one.
Five point one zero.
It'll be five point, it'll be the first five point one zero.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be added to the bottom of the fives.
Anybody else have anything they want to add to or lead from the agenda? Seeing none, I entertain the motion, just sit. All right, got a motion, got a second? All right. All in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed, motion passed. All right, next item is the approval of the minutes.
I hope that we accept the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from, I think it's May fourth.
May first.
May first.
May first.
Okay. And I'll recuse myself from May fourth.
Okay.
Due to my absence.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? You got a motion, got a second? All right. All in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed, motion passed. Next item is our public recognition, and I would ask Mr. Terry Williams to assist Ms. DeCoke to come forward at this time. Ms. DeCoke Spencer, excuse me.
Good evening. The character trait that was recognized in our schools for the month of May was perseverance, and our prizes this month are sponsored by Pizza Inn Washington. The nominees at the elementary level were from Bath Elementary, Colby Spruill; from Chalkwood into Middle, Diamond McLean; from Chalkwood into Primary, Savannah Silverthorn; from Eastern Elementary, Dequarian Norton; from John Cotton Taylor, Latisha Hogan; from John Small, Kelso Moreno; from Northeast Elementary, Caesar Garcia; from SW Snowden, Antonio Crass Jr. And the winner at the elementary level was Colby Spruill from Bath Elementary, if he will come forward. She... Dad, you can stand up, I need the door.
Come on daddy, come on. Say that.
Colby is a first grader at Bath Elementary School. Her parents are David and Tiffany Spruill, if they will stand. And she was presented by her teacher, Ms. Julie Woollett, if she will stand. And Ms. Woollett wrote, perseverance is having the strength to persevere even though it is difficult. Colby Spruill has taught her classmates that giving up is not an option. She teaches by her example. When I think about Colby, I think about the little engine that could. She is determined to get the job done one way or the other. Colby gets so excited when she accomplishes little things that we all take for granted. She has taught us patience and courage. We should all try to be more like this outstanding little girl. It is with great pleasure that our class nominates Colby as this month's character education recipient. We say congratulations, Colby.
We are so proud of you, so happy. Glad you're here with us tonight. We have a certificate and a gift certificate that keeps me. Who is our sponsor?
Congratulations.
Great job, young lady.
Congratulations.
At the middle school level, the nominees were from Chalkwood into Middle, Mallory Hudson; from PS Jones Middle, Molly Cooper; and from SW Snowden, Amir Smith. And the winner at the middle school level was Amir Smith from SW Snowden, if he will come forward. Amir is a sixth grader at SW Snowden. His mother is Ms. Shawnee Smith, if she will stand.
Grandmother.
Grandmother, okay. You can stay, grandma. And he was presented by his counselor, Mr. Wayne Parsons, if he will stand. And Mr. Parsons wrote, Amir Smith never gives up. He accepts challenges every day and asks questions when he doesn't understand. He takes redirection with confidence and is proud of his work. His purpose for doing an assignment is to learn the material and get the right answer. He does not start an assignment thinking he's just going to get something on paper and be finished with it. Amir asked for extra work to take home over Easter break so that he could practice what we were learning in class. He knew that this would help Amir in that. When he came back from break, he proudly handed me his folder full of work. Because of Amir's perseverance, I nominate him for May Character Education Award. We say congratulations.
We also have a certificate for you and a gift certificate, and perseverance is a wonderful trait to have. We hope it stays with you for a long, long time. If you would, just come around here, the board would like to read with you.
Congratulations. We got it, we got it.
And we'll call you back up in just a second for some pictures.
At the high school level, the nominees were from the Early College High School, Journey Lee; from Northside High School, Kenesha Satchel. And the winner at the high school level was Kenesha Satchel from Northside High School, if she will come forward. Kenesha is a tenth grader at Northside High School. Her father is Mr. Erman Satchel, if he will stand. And she was presented by her teacher, Ms. Melissa Boyd, if she's here, she will stand. And Ms. Boyd wrote, this month's character trait is perseverance, and no one, in my opinion, displays that better than Kenesha Satchel. She is one of my best and most hard-working students in my on-level civics class. To persevere at something often means that you have to continue to work hard even if you do not receive instant gratification for your efforts. Kenesha has shown time and again that she has no fear of working hard, whether it's at school, work, sports, or just being an overall good person. Kenesha sees it as a challenge that it is to be overcome, that is to be overcome, not one that is to hold you back. Kenesha currently has a ninety-nine average in my class, but if you tell her that, she will be tough on herself because it's not one hundred. I appreciate students like that because she constantly strives to be better than she was yesterday. She doesn't settle for just passing, she wants to be the best she can be. She studies hard and puts forth her effort, best effort in all that she does. She also plays hard and is a wonderful example to teammates of someone who doesn't allow challenges to slow her down. She shows tremendous sportsmanship on the basketball court and cheers her teammates and their success, and is quick to offer encouragement if they falter. She will always have your back in a tough situation. For me, there are many of our character edge traits that Kenesha would easily fit under, but I'm proud to nominate her for the character trait of perseverance. She is a terrific example of Northside Panther pride. We say congratulations.
We have a certificate for you as well, and we're very proud of you, and we're very honored to have you here with us tonight. If you would, we would like to individually speak with you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Since I've been called, yeah.
Picture time. Well, let her get around before we invite the others up.
Daddy, you wanna go do the picture, man?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, we have our...
If you're worn out, honey, bring your shirt.
I'm right here, you see?
If you're worn out, honey, bring your shirt.
I'd like to ask Amy Bennett to come up, if she would. Amy is one of our teachers at the EdTech Center, and we have a very special award that she's already received officially, but we want to share it with the folks publicly and for our board. And I like to read this, and this is from the North Carolina Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education Center, and it says, "For dedication in making a difference in and providing support to students at EdTech, an alternative school in Beaufort County, for using STEM education to inspire and engage students in her classroom, the Outstanding Grades Nine through Sixteen Educator Award in Science, Mathematics, and Technology Education is awarded to Amy Bennett, EdTech, Beaufort County Schools." This award recognizes a North Carolina nine-through-sixteen educator who excels in fulfilling the mission of the North Carolina Science, Math, and Technology Education Center. So she is the state teacher of the year in that area, and she got a very nice...
Yeah, I'm trying to show it to everyone. This thing weighs at least ten pounds. And he told me not to drop it, I had to pay for it.
And Ms. Bennett was recognized a couple weeks ago at a banquet, and we've got a video we'd like for you to see, too, but...
Congratulations, we're so proud of you, so very proud.
We're doing the video.
All right.
Yeah, let's do a quick picture. We'll do it after the video.
I'm a retired PE teacher, and they enjoy that because they get to play basketball, and that's what they like to do, and I think that's the avenue I can usually really get to know their kids. So we play together and we have a good time. But I wanted them to be exposed to more things than just playing basketball and everything. A year ago, I know nothing of coding, never coded anything before, and I just went to workshop and got my feet wet, basically, and learned alongside of them. They helped me learn, and I helped them learn. You gotta define what turning right means. This is an alternative school, so we pull kids from all over Beaufort County. So by the time students get here, they feel like this is their last chance or last opportunity to make something of themselves. Through using STEM, they can learn life skills, such as problem-solving or asking the right question.
You just started with the if-then statement, didn't you?
Yeah.
You're a little frustrated sometimes.
Yes, gives me a headache.
Part of what Amy does is excites the kids about school. They don't know they're learning when they're in her class.
Here's smoke or a lot of tissue.
To them, it's fun. The kids are learning that they are able to do more than what they or their families thought they could do. They're able to challenge themselves in other classes.
Oh, yeah, this is...
I never heard of coding. These things that she got us in here having experience to do, we probably do that like once a year in a big house.
It's coming at you.
Like, y'all live where you might try one of these. But we in here doing all of these, like, that's amazing to me. That's a, like, that's a good privilege.
And put your speed to her.
If they respect you, then they're gonna do what they can to reach whatever bar you set for them. So I set the bar high, and for the most part, they reach it. Definitely learn to be patient with them, because each student needs something different, and they need something different day by day. A lot of the kids struggle at home, and bring their struggles with them to school. They have babies that they get off and take care of and get to daycare, or you really never know what they're coming in with that morning.
We've got students, this alternative school, they're doing things that traditional
And now is a perfect time, if you would like to exit right or left, whichever way you
high school students aren't doing. She has a passion for the students. I mean, she really wants to make sure that they have exposure and opportunities, and
want to go. Now's the time to do it.
they benefit from having a teacher like that.
But we'd love to have you stay, but I understand if you got to leave.
I learn a lot from my students. They really do get into your heart. They're like family, they're like my own kids.
I know two that'll stay.
Definitely want them to realize that they're not throwaway kids, that they do have passions and talents and things that they can offer this community or wherever they find their fit in. They make my job really enjoyable.
Lisa, can you get a picture real quick?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move on down to item five, discussion action. First item, as all of you know by now, we will be losing our superintendent. And with that, we have to start a superintendent search, and we were contacted by the School Board Association, and Ms. Allison Shaker is here tonight, and she would like to make a presentation at this time to the board.
Good evening, board members. With me is Sam Thorpe, who is one of our staff attorneys, who actually, I think I should toss from here, is that the way you guys work it? Sam is one of the staff attorneys that works with me on superintendent search stuff in my department, and he also worked with you on your policy manual, so he is handing out some materials for you. We did send a memo to you describing our services already, I think you all should have gotten it, but if you want to just open up your folders, you'll see that the memo is on the right-hand side and some materials that I wanted to share with you. As you know, we do superintendent searches through the School Boards Association. I have been doing superintendent search administration, administrative services with the School Boards Association for nineteen years now, and I've been at the School Boards Association twenty. So I started this service right soon after I came to the association. Many other state school boards associations across the country do this service, and we didn't have one at that time, but I started the one that we have now. And I had also done some searches when I was at Tharrington Smith as an attorney, so I spent twelve years in private practice as an educational attorney as well. So since I've been at the School Boards Association, in the last nineteen years, we have represented and worked with districts, seventy-nine of the one-hundred-and-fifteen school districts in the state. And that's obviously a great, great percentage or vast majority of the districts. We also have done one-hundred-and-sixty-one searches, which means we've done searches several times for different, for various boards, and we actually did the search that brought Dr. Phillips here eight and a half years ago. So I think that's a pretty good, long track record, and we congratulate him on his new position. But eight and a half years is a very long time for a superintendent, and I know he's done a good job here, and you all have appreciated him very much. We have a staff of attorneys that do this work, and that's just the way it has grown up in North Carolina, that sometimes attorneys have done the work on behalf of their clients, and then when we started this service now, a lot of the attorneys suggest that we do it. And we actually have developed quite a reputation for finding good folks and having a really good process, and we're very, very proud of that. We, our attorneys know the open meetings law and the public records law and the confidentiality laws, and it helps that they're involved. I've also been very active myself at the National Association, at the national level. There's a group called the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. I just finished a year as chair and rolled off the executive committee of that group, but we have contacts all across the country with the thirty-six states that do this service. So I think it actually might be up to forty now. So we are here to talk to you a little bit about doing a superintendent search generally, and we want you to know that if you would like to do a search, we have the service, but I just want to talk to you about the process generally and what it would look like, whether you use us or not. So we are your association, and we are here to assist you. Behind the memo is a timeline, and I'm gonna use that to just talk about the different stages of a superintendent search service. First of all, the first thing you need to decide before you decide whether you're going to do a search is whether you already have someone in mind that you were gonna go ahead and hire. Some districts have someone who they want to go ahead and hire for whatever reason, but many searches, even if they ultimately end up hiring in-house, for example, they would do a search to make sure that they were finding the best candidate, and it gives that candidate credibility. So the first issue is whether you want to do a search, and then how you want to go about it. It takes about six months to do a good search. What we have found over the years, and doing as many as we have, that the best amount of advertising time is about eight weeks. We find that if you do less than that, you get less applicants. If you do more than that, you don't get many more, so that's about where you get the maximum amount. We do need that amount of time to get the word out, for people to get the information about the search, to research whether they want to go there, and to also complete the application form and get the other materials submitted. So that's what we normally find. It is very important that you consider what kind of community and staff input you want to have in your search. As the board members know, the laws in North Carolina do not allow for public dissemination of confidential personnel information, including the identity of candidates and any of the materials that they submit. So because it is under our state laws, a closed process, when you get to who the candidates are, we suggest that you consider doing community input while you're advertising the position and before the applications come in. What we do as part of our service is that we have sample online surveys that you can use. We have two different, several different kinds, and you can choose how you want to do that, but we do recommend an online survey. We find that if you do public forums, you usually only get a few people. If people can complete it anonymously and in the comfort of their own homes, you're gonna get a lot more input. So we do recommend online. You also have public comment sessions at your board meetings where people are free to come comment, and some boards do another session if they feel like that would be warranted. So it depends on how you want to go about that. Our surveys do distinguish between staff and community. We give them essentially the same substantive survey, but we have them take it separately so that you see what your staff concerns are as compared to what your community concerns are. So we do commend that to you. Another thing that we suggest you might want to think about is if you have community groups such as the county commissioners or the Chamber of Commerce, if they want to make organizational statements and submit those to the board as a letter, just what their concerns are, what they're looking for in a new superintendent. So that input is really important. After you get that input, we do recommend that you come together in a regular board meeting, and we would, if we do it, we would present that information, but also discuss what you're looking for, you know, and develop a profile for your next superintendent, but informed by that information. So it's important to get that information before you develop your profile so that you can take it into account when you are looking at what you want in the next superintendent, and you can consider it. From that information, we also, when we do it, work to develop a rating sheet that board members can use as they consider the applicants, and also to develop questions for the applicants as the ones that you're questioning. So the only date that you really need to be firm about is the application deadline. As I said, we usually recommend about eight weeks. Here, we've taken it this, beginning after your June five meeting, which I guess is your next meeting, and July thirty would be eight weeks. After the applications come in, it takes a while to get them prepared, about two work weeks, and to get them prepared, we pull all that information together. When we do a search, we pull out, not just the application, but the university credentials, the internet, we do internet searches for each candidate, and that's really important because you want to get information that's out there publicly available, and so it takes a little while to get that together. The next stage is the board comes together and reviews the applications. We do recommend that just the board make decisions and sit in on interviews when they do occur. We, if we help you with a search, do not recommend candidates, we do not screen candidates. We feel like by law, it is your job as the board, but we try to give you good tools to get you where you need to go and to give good information about candidates. Remember, we're the School Boards Association, and we're very respectful of your role. We, many services across the country, especially for-profit services, will tell you who they think your five top candidates are. You're the people who are elected but from your community, you're the people who know what your school system needs. You live here every day, and it doesn't make sense for someone from, you know, Iowa or somewhere to be making those decisions for you. So we don't recommend that you have someone that screens for you, but we do give you good tools that allow you to do that, and we will, you know, if you were gonna do that with us, we would give those to you. So the board gets the applications, they review the applications, you make a decision about who you want to interview. What we do recommend is between seven and ten candidates for the first interview. We say, less than seven, and you feel like you don't have too much of a choice, more than ten, and you're overwhelmed with a lot of interviews. We have been seeing between, we get asked a lot, how many applications can we expect? When we get up to fifteen, we figure that's a good number. Remember, this is a very specialized position. There's not many people in your community that are qualified to hold it, and we do advertise, suggest you advertise statewide and nationally, and again, if you use us, we can tell you where we think you should advertise for the most, for the best effect. So the board usually selects between seven and ten folks to interview. You interview those people, and then usually you narrow it down to three or four folks. We usually say between two and four, but if you only have two and one drops out for some reason, then you don't have a choice left, so we usually say three or four. And then between the first and second interviews is when we recommend that you do a very diligent, due process, I mean, I see, due diligence review and get references of the candidates, do a criminal and credit check. Remember, this is a person who is in charge of millions of dollars and your whole school system financially, so you need to make sure that you thoroughly check them out and make sure that they have a good background and there's no questions. And that is something that we do on behalf of the districts that we work with. And then the next step would be to have final interviews and ask questions that are more targeted to specific candidates, and then at that point, you decide generally who you want to choose and make an offer to. It's still all confidential through that process, who you're talking to and who the candidates are, and then it goes to your board attorney to negotiate a contract with that person. We cannot be your lawyers, we're not here to represent you as lawyers, you have a lawyer for that purpose, and so she would take over the contract negotiations with whomever. And then you need usually at least a month from, between when you decide and for that person to get here. So you do have to make a vote in open session about who you want to hire, and you see here, we have the announcement of the superintendent on this draft timeline in October, but you usually need about a month for them to give notice where they're coming from and get here. So we're looking at, our best guess would be having someone here by the end of November, I think the twenty-sixth is the Monday after Thanksgiving. So that's kind of the general process. Again, as I said, you know, we're very respectful of the board's role. We, our job is to help you have a good process, get great candidates, and get great information on those candidates so that you can make good decisions. And I think you did really well the last time, so I think you'll get good candidates, I think you have a good school system, your desirable place to be, and so I think you should have a good process and a good result. I would be happy to answer any questions about our process, if you have any.
Any questions?
This is an action item, what are we doing, the action?
And then you need usually at least a month between when you decide and for that person to get here. So you do have to make a vote in open session about who you want to hire. And you see here, we have the announcement of the superintendent on this draft timeline in October, but you usually need about a month for them to give notice where they're coming from and get here. So we're looking at, our best guess would be having someone here by the end of November. I think the 26th is the Monday after Thanksgiving. So that's kind of the general process. Again, as I said, we're very respectful of the board's role. Our job is to help you have a good process, get great candidates, and get great information on those candidates so that you can make good decisions. And I think you did really well the last time, so I think you'll get good candidates. I think you have a good school system, your desirable place to be, and so I think you should have a good process and a good result. I will be happy to answer any questions about our process, if you have any.
Any questions?
This is an action item. What are we doing, the action?
Well, if you'd like to accept their offer to do the search.
But do we know what the price is?
It's in the materials. The price, I'm sorry, I should have covered that. The price is a flat fee for our time, $18,500, and then any expenses that the board chooses to incur, which would include advertising costs, if you choose to pay for candidates' travel, and then our mileage and other travel expenses that you would pay for your attorneys from Raleigh to come do. So we're looking at a guess of about $25,000.
$25,000?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the increase, what kind of increase was that from eight years ago?
I do not remember. It's gone up a little bit.
You pay them charges, don't you?
No, I just wondered what the increase would be.
We increase it a little bit regularly, just because of the cost of living increases and things like that. Cost of airfare goes up, whatever. But that's generally where we see it coming down.
You did a pretty good job last time.
Thank you. We think so, too. And we try to be incredibly thorough. I mean, we've given you in our materials references. We have, we are actually working with Tyrrell right now. That's the smallest school system in the state, and we just finished, we're also working with Wake right now, and just on the end of that one. And that's our largest school system in the state. So we are covering everyone. We've done the smallest to the largest, and we have given you the names of some of the folks we've worked with recently. We just finished with Cumberland, and Wake, Granville, Camden, Pender, and Carteret. We tried to choose some of the ones in the eastern part of the state that we worked with recently. We invite you to call any of those folks if you have any questions about our service. We think that you, we hope you'll get a good result. They all said they would be happy to give us a good recommendation.
I don't have any desire to look anywhere else but you, so you want a motion?
I have a question. I know in a perfect world, this would be a timeline, but theoretically, can't, if it's a sitting superintendent coming from another county, can't their county hold them for 90 days?
Depends on what their contract says. The state law says 30 in order to not revoke someone's certificate, which is why we built in 30 days here. So some of them have no specific time, the 30 days, we just kind of assume. Some of them have 90, some of them have 60, but most just do the 30.
Because if we wanted somebody that needed to be at 90, then we actually would not be getting a superintendent till after the first of the year.
That's possible. And again, that depends on who your candidate is. We don't see that boards generally hold folks too long, but a month is at least fair to have at least that amount of time, so that's reasonable.
Carolyn, I think you're right. I think in a perfect world, we'll probably be looking at the first of the year.
That's what I'm thinking, too.
If everything goes well.
And that may be a more ideal time to start someone than right before the holidays.
That's an awkward time to leave a system, if it's a sitting superintendent or assistant superintendent.
And that's all a matter of negotiation, and you can say, we don't expect you to come. Again, if you use us, you can say, we don't expect someone to come before January. We're just trying to get it as quickly as possible. And some of these things are ranges, too. We could conceivably, you could meet to do interviews at the beginning of that range, but we were trying to give you a number of dates because it's hard to get this many people together, busy people.
And I have another question. This is my first time.
Absolutely.
I have another question. When you're doing the background searches and all the things, but you still want us to do our due diligence, even, but do you share the information you find, good and bad?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
You share all of it?
Yeah. So what we say is, the best thing to do is, we normally do the background checks and don't have individual board members going to people they know, but we'll talk, we can talk about that and what you're comfortable with. One of the benefits of using us is that we work with every single school board in the state. Every single school board in the state is a member. We work with all of them. We know all the board members and all the sitting superintendents. We know who's looking. We also have our national relationships if you have out-of-state candidates, and we rely on each other. I mean, I talk to the people in Virginia and South Carolina and Georgia and Tennessee all the time. So we share information that way, and we also know who is going to give us honest answers. We know if there's an issue in someone's background that we're, we're usually aware of it. I mean, that's the advantage of using us, because we are really plugged into this community. And we also are very, very thorough. We have a great criminal credit check, which is an extra part of the expense, but we have a great services out of Durham that does national searches, criminal credit searches for us. And then we do the reference checking ourselves. And we try to be very thorough. We don't just talk to the people they give us. We talk to the people we think we are going to get good answers from, and we try to get enough recommendations and information for consistency. And yes, absolutely, we share everything we get. We are not here to hide anything from you. On the contrary, we're here to get you all the information you need, negative, positive, indifferent, whatever. I will say that if you can get a bad recommendation from one person, and if everyone else says that person's wonderful, you may not have a lot of credibility. That person, you may say, well, this person's fine. They just had one person that didn't like them. What you're looking for is consistency. And this is, and we always ask things like, what are their weaknesses? What are their strengths? How do they deal with instruction? How do they deal with personnel issues? Tell me a time when they did X, that kind of stuff. So we have a very thorough form, and we try to be very thorough. The other thing I want to say is, as far as we're concerned, it's your process. And so we can recommend what's worked for us in the past, and that's what our job is. We can draft documents, but anything you want to change, we'll talk about it and we'll do it the way you all want to do it. We're not here to tell you, we have to do it this way. That's not our job. Our job is to give you a process you feel good about, that is thorough. If there's more information you need, we'll go get it. We're here to serve you.
And do those funds come out of general funds?
From my experiences with these folks, and some of the rest of you guys I've been around, too, these folks practice what they preach. They're going to tell you the good and bad, the other, because they're working for us.
We want to hear that.
Absolutely.
Before, not after.
And I promise you, we're thorough. If we see there's something we need to explore more, we will go after it and figure out what the real story is. We're lawyers, too. We're used to that.
Any more questions?
So you don't do any collateral information. What you get, you give us?
We give you everything, because again, part of our philosophy is, you're the decision makers. But what we do is several things. We do a background, an internet search on every candidate, and that'll give you articles, back to your point. It'll give you articles that may say this person got bought out, or it may say this person's involved in this lawsuit, or there's been a controversy about this, or it may say they are superintendent of the year. And we'll give you all that information. What we also do is we do what's called an experience chart, and we will pull out sort of the vital statistics of folks. Have they been a superintendent? If so, where, and how many years, and where was their, how many kids were in that school system? So that's a really good kind of tool to start with, the person who's had the kind of experience you're looking for. It's kind of a way to go through the candidates and say, well, this person looks particularly interesting to start with that person. We want somebody with superintendent or assistant superintendent experience. Well, there may be some on that list that don't have it. If that's what your goals are, then you can use that list to kind of say, well, these are the people that I want to read first, because these are the people that have what I want. And then these other folks, I will read through and see if they're also interesting, but it's completely up to you. It is work, I'm going to tell you. It is work to read through that material. And we give you a lot of materials, but we try to give you tools that allow you to say, to focus on the people that you think are most interesting.
And so many school boards now have their meetings online, so you can view. For me personally, that would tell me a lot, because if it's truly an unpopular person, they may give us a glowing recommendation, because they're trying to get him or her out of the county. So you can tell more by the body language to me and watching a meeting if the board is receptive to that particular person or not.
One thing that, we used to have that problem. Again, I've been around a long time now. So we used to have that issue in a couple situations where they were like, oh, we didn't want to tell you the real truth. But what we've started doing, which has been very helpful, is we ask for evaluations that the board has given that person before they knew they were looking, when they were truly evaluating them. And that has actually helped address some of those issues of, this is what they really think about their person, outside of the context of any search. So that we ask for lots of that kind of information, as much as we can think of that is helpful.
I know there's, I guess, only three board members that have been through this before. Is that right? Just the three of y'all?
One, two, three.
So I mean, I feel like we're going to need a lot of handholding and...
You'll be doing a lot of praying around here.
It's going to be merit to each other for a while.
It's going to be a process.
It is. It's a lot of work, because you have to review the applications, you have to, the interviews are, require commitment of time. But this is the most important decision you all are going to make for your kids for the next period of time here.
You're just going to work with everybody's schedule, try to find.
Right. And it's really important. One reason, go back to a question that I was asked about, one reason why we think it's helpful if we do the reference checking is that every board member gets the same information at the same time, and we're very adamant about that. We do not just communicate with one board member. We give you all the same information. And by the same token, it's really important that all board members participate, as much as humanly possible, in all meetings, because this is a decision all of you have a really important investment in. And it's important that everybody feel like they have their voices heard and their vote counts.
Any more questions?
You want to make it official?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we accept their offer.
All right. I'll second. Any further discussion? See you none. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Wow, thank you so much. We weren't necessarily expecting that, but we really appreciate it.
That gets worse.
Yeah. The time is running.
Well, we'll get you another good one, yes. But I just want to say, too, that the next step would now be for us to come back, probably at your June 5 meeting, if that works for you all, with a series of documents for you to approve. Again, we need your approval in places. We would advertise the application form, the surveys, and other things like that, the advertisement. So we would come back on June 5 and begin that process. Does that work for you all? Before that time, we will send you draft documents, so you'll have a chance to look at them ahead of time. And we really look forward to working with you. You guys are a great board. I've always enjoyed working with all of you, those of you that I know, those of you that I just met. So thank you.
Chris Mon, I mean, when you say you'll send us stuff, will you be sending stuff to Ms. Lisa, or will you be sending it to each of our emails?
Each of your email addresses. And the other thing that we do, I'm so happy to see you all there on computer. We have, all our applications are done online, and what we do is we post the applications on a secure website, and we will give you at the next meeting a little card that has your website, has the website directions to get on it, and then your number, it's assembly number, that you would, or your passcode to get on, and all of that will be posted. If you want to run off applications at home, or the ones that you're interested in, you can certainly do that, but it saves a lot of cost and time for us to give it to you electronically, and that's just the way the world is going now. So if you need to check your assembly account, we'll send you an email that says, check your assembly account. We have applications online, they've been posted, but you all will be very confidential about making sure that no one else gets those, except the people on the board can get access. This is not our first row to go, so we've learned through the years. So we really appreciate, we will look forward to working with you, and thank you very, very much for your vote.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter. Nice meeting you, Sam.
Yes.
Safe travels.
You may see more Sam, too.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on down to item 5.2, School Board Association Legislative Committee Appointment, Dr. Phipps.
Brought this up last month. We had an invitation that each board could nominate one board member to serve on the committee. The individual should be nominated through a vote of the full board taking an open session, and the person who's nominated must be able to commit to attending both meetings. I know Ms. Booth has mentioned that she is interested. I don't know if anyone else responded to the chairman or not, but I'm bringing that back up just as an action item, so we can take care of that.
I'm nominating Ms. Elfa Booth to be our representative.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second, Ms. Booth. Representing us on this committee?
I'm going to try.
You're going to try? Okay.
You've got two meetings, you can go down.
That's right. We're going to vote quick, so you don't back out. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations. Okay. All right. Item 5.3.
Policy updates. And you just saw Sam here, he does this work for the School Board Association. There are several things I wanted to highlight, and these have been out for you all to take a look at. On the first page, and what I'm looking at is the document, that's kind of the matrix. It shows the updated policy, the title and the description, and then it's got a legal authority. There are just a couple things that I wanted to highlight. The second policy that's listed is actually called Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying Complaint Procedure, and it's, there are three policy numbers, it's 1720, 4015, and 7225. I want to hold that so that Kim and I have a chance to look at. There's several things on here that are OCR-related from a question-and-answer document that they put out, and it suggests that we have some review with legal counsel, and she and I have not had a chance, so I'm pulling that one from the list when you do your... Wanted to highlight that on page three of that, which is policy 4316, student dress code, the only change here is some wording. It does not change the content. The same thing with gang-related activity, which is 4328. And then on, we also wanted to pull policy 7410, because we've already done that one. We're a little bit ahead on that one, so we don't have to worry about it. And there was one other policy that I wanted to look at with Kim, and it's policy 9125, participation by minority businesses. I want to pull that one. Policy 8220, which is gifts and bequests. There's a section in there that I needed to bring your attention to, and it says that the superintendent shall make a recommendation to the board on the suitability of any donation with a value that exceeds, and then there's a blank space there. And I've talked with Willie Mack, and what we'd recommend is that the board allow us to put the number $5,000 there. So if there's any type of a gift, and we look forward to any donations that we can get, but certainly over $5,000 would be brought back to you with a recommendation for suitability according to the kind of work that we're doing and that type of thing. But other than that, I'd like to ask for approval. These policy updates are recommended, strongly recommended, or required because of legislation, and this allows us to make sure that our policies are at all times up to date. And then we'll be bringing the other ones back to you.
Excuse me, I make a motion that we approve the policies as submitted, with the exception of the ones that Dr. Phipps and Kim need to go over together. And I'm not going to name those, I guess.
Second. All right, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
And you'll bring those back to us, I guess, once you...
I'll try to do it in the month of June.
Okay. Dr. Phipps, I'll let you go down to 5.4.
Each year, we have a trustee that we have the ability to nominate, and the current request is to nominate Mitch St. Clair to continue to serve. I talked to Mitch today, and they have several things that he's been instrumental in, and he wants to see it through, so he's asked that we do allow him to continue to serve. And I'd like to make that recommendation for approval for Mitch to serve with the board of trustees.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Congratulations, Mr. St. Clair. Alright, 5.5.
These are, Stan is out of town, so I'm doing this on his behalf. And you may ask me a question that I don't know, and I'm just gonna tell you I don't know. There are three projects that are here that we need approval on. And I want to, I want to get a direction from you all. There are a couple of issues with this. Bath Elementary Compressor, a Bath Elementary HVAC. And then Snowden also has an air conditioner. Bath has a chiller and a compressor, two separate items, and Snowden has an HVAC issue. Brady Train is the only business company in North Carolina that does the kind of work that needs to be done on the chiller at Bath. And we've got a quoted price to do that work of $24,399.47. I'm gonna share all three items with you and then have some conversation. The Bath HVAC compressor, we had a couple, three bids on that. And the low bid on it is, yeah, and it's 8225, $8,225. And then SW Snowden, the low bid is $8,475. We're sitting right now with about $700, not 700,000, not 70,000, not 7,000, $700 in our fund balance for capital. Which is kind of where we're at with what we've received with funding and the projects that we've been working with. The only way to get this done either would be to dip into our regular fund balance and bring money over. But we have a few projects that we currently don't, haven't started activity on. And they're primarily the paving projects that we were waiting to get done this summer. Those projects altogether have a total of $118,000. So we've got money there that would not be additional money. It's money that's already in capital. But it will be repurposed. If you want me to put these projects on hold until we can get this taken care of, and then go back and pick off the asphalt projects as we can. We haven't got current bids. I asked Stan to go ahead and get those. They're reluctant to do asphalt bids too early because the cost changes with the petroleum and all that. So I asked him to go ahead and work on that, because by the time we got to July, we'd be within a 90-day timeframe. So those numbers on the asphalt projects may change slightly. But we can put those on hold, take care of the air conditioning needs that we have here, or I'll do whatever you wish me to do. My concern is, you know, we've talked, in my eight and a half years, we've, we've kind of bandied around the idea of working without a fund balance. Well, we're seeing what happens now. And the issue is that we're gonna have to go to the commissioners when needs come up, because we don't have money to draw from. There may be a need for us to go back and put a contingency line item in capital in the future, just to be able to have it for things like this. But these are three air conditioner concerns that we have today. There may be additional air conditioner concerns that come up next month, given the heat that we're gonna be dealing with and the age of some of our equipment. But I'm presenting that to you for consideration, and then we'd like some direction of what you all want us to do.
What's your recommendations as far as the difference in the, I mean, assuming there's gonna be there, people that are in the summer working?
There will be. And what Stan said, if we go ahead and get the work done, we could be finished by the middle of next week and have the air condition in place. Otherwise, it's gonna be a long 15 more days or so.
I think AC is more important than asphalt, right? Yeah, I'd repurpose.
These are systems that are not currently working.
Not working.
We gotta have.
Yeah, I'd repurpose the money.
Now, you say we're at $700 left in fund balance, but that's taking out what we've, what we've got projected for the asphalt projects. Is that, is that right?
That's unencumbered, that hasn't, excuse me, inappropriate to everything else, doctors.
We already forgot about you.
Feel the love around here.
Yes, sir. That's 118,000, just in asphalt projects. So there still will be, if these came in at that budgeted amount, there still would be more than half of that left over to do whatever we could on asphalt.
But the 118,000 is encumbered, but we haven't really got a bid to do it.
It's assigned to those asphalt projects.
We're moving money.
I don't see that we have a choice. I make a move, I make a motion that we do whatever Willie Mack has to do to make that possible.
Second. Got a motion and a second?
There you go. Anybody got a table, put one more?
See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
I knew your name, Willie Mack.
Okay. Alright, 5.6, Dr. Phipps, Custodial Contract.
The current custodial contract that we have with SEVEL, and we have a representative here tonight, ends on the 31st of August this year. And the board has the option to extend the contract for two additional one-year terms. And SEVEL has indicated that they'd be interested in negotiating a contract extension. What I need is direction from you all, and you can either direct me, or with Kim working with us, to enter into negotiations with SEVEL for a contract extension to look at the conditions and terms. Or you can ask us to rebid the contract by issuing a new RFP. And we're just asking for some guidance from you all tonight in terms of taking next steps.
It was my understanding in speaking with Stan in the past that he was gonna put out a new RFP, or I thought maybe, I mean, that was one of his recommendations. Did he not mention anything since, I know he can't be here tonight, but did he not mention?
It may have been something said, but I.
I don't know if he was looking RFP route or not, I don't know.
Okay. Well, when did you, no, it runs out a couple of months, isn't it, in June, or is it one month?
It ends August 31st, end of, end of August.
How about, how about if we ask this? How about if we ask Ms. Edwards to sit down and negotiate a contract extension with Mr. SEVEL to get through this?
And bring it back to us?
And bring it back.
Yeah.
That doesn't obligate us to approve it, depending on how it turns out, but.
Would that be okay?
Yes, I see a downside to that. I would just be in the role of Mr. SEVEL to see what terms they would give you for a contract extension. And so then, at the next board meeting, you would have more information. It would be either contract with SEVEL for another year for this amount, or issue a new RFP and throw it out there and see what kind of bids we get.
Yeah, I don't see where you'd really make a decision otherwise without information.
And by that time, you would have known if, if Stan did say that.
What is the recommendation? Yeah. Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm fine with it.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
I make a motion that we turn contract negotiation over for this extension to our school board attorney, Ms. Edwards.
Second. Alright, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Good enough. Alright. Sixth grade athletic participation, Dr. Phipps.
This is revisiting a topic that was brought to you by Joe Koch. It was brought to him by, I suppose, in terms of athletic participation. If you recall, the state made that allowance, a possibility and option for school boards, with the exception of football. Sixth graders can't participate in football. We've had several principals who said they would like to extend the ability for athletic participation to sixth graders. We talked about that last, at the last meeting, and I didn't want to force that on you. I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to administrators or how you feel about it, but we were asking for consideration for this for approval.
Okay. Now, I do know, can I speak to what?
Yeah.
I do know there was some people out there that aren't in favor of this. But if we make a decision however the board decides, I don't want it by school. There was some talk about that. I just would like to see us either go yes or no for everybody. I don't want to do it, you know, it's by school.
And something to do with letting their child.
That's right. If you don't, you don't go out.
That's right. That's exactly right.
I mean, we're just saying, we're just talking more or less about options. That's right.
Don't want a cherry pick, schools. It's all or nothing.
Just having to say that, I mean, however the board wants to go. I just don't want it done by school.
I have talked to several ADs, middle school ADs. I've talked to one administrator, and talked to some coaches. I've talked to some players. I've talked to some high school coaches. And I've gotten mixed feelings, and I've talked to his parents. I've gotten mixed feelings about it from all of them. But I just, I don't see any of our schools right now that have problems, with the exception of Snowden. And I, we did, last year, we said that Snowden, if it caused them to be able to make a team, that they could allow sixth graders.
That's right. We did, we did that. That's right.
And I don't see any of any of the schools having a problem making teams right now. And I think all you're doing is asking, one, you're putting more work on your athletic graders. Because every student that tries out has got to be concussion tested, and their grades got to be checked and all that. So you put more work on them. Plus, you're putting more pressure on the coaches. Because instead of having, say at PS Jones, instead of having 40 or 50 tryout for softball, now they're gonna have 70, 60 or 70, because you added another grade. And then they've got to call down to 12, 13, 14, however many they want on their team. I think it's putting more pressure on, it was, it's taking away opportunities for seventh and eighth graders that may be a little less athletic than maybe a really good sixth grader. And that sixth grader make the team, and then that kid, that was a seventh grader, if they don't make it in the seventh grade, they may not ever play again, and they may blossom as a ninth grader and grow three or four inches and could have been a great basketball player, you know. But the, I just, I don't think, but it, I don't see a whole lot of advantages of it. The only thing that's been, the only advantage that's been put to me is that Pitt County does it. And PS Jones plays in Pitt County League, and Pitt County does it. And I, Pitt County does a lot of things that we don't do.
Wasn't Michael Jordan cut from his varsity team?
He was.
He's done pretty well.
Yeah, he is.
I actually have not spoken to anybody. Do we have to make this decision tonight?
Joe's just trying to get it done going into the summer, so he can get all those forms and things.
But we're having more meetings. I would like, can we table this to next month? Because I would like an opportunity to talk. I'd like to do what Butch did, just to know when I take a vote, that it's with more information than what I have right now.
So you just want to table.
If you want me to have the principals come, so you can hear what you can.
I'd love that.
That may be the thing to do, but I've had similar calls from you saying that. It was actually counter to that, right? Not counter to that, but it was more that the sixth graders are cut, would that discourage them from wanting to, to participate in the future? So, I mean, that's, the arguments definitely.
And I have, I have had a couple of parents call me and say that, you know, they, that their kid's gonna be a sixth grader next year. And, you know, and, but this is the only year it really affects them. You know, their kid's gonna be a sixth grader next year. They feel like they, they would make the team, and they would really benefit the team and all, and that's great. But they'll, they'll do it again in seventh grade, too. I mean, it's a, I, if we had, if our schools were struggling to make numbers, and it, that may happen in, in the future, but if they were struggling to make numbers, to make teams, I could see us doing it, but I just.
And as far as the principals, it's up to you, but I wouldn't. Because, I mean, first off, the principals have got enough on their plate. And I can go and tell you right now which principals want it and which ones don't.
Let me do it.
So there's no need for me to listen to them for 20 minutes telling me that. Not, if y'all want to have them do that, you can. That's fine, but I personally don't need it.
I'm just going by what, you know, Joe, Joe's discussion with us, and maybe I read it wrong, but I took it to mean there were more in favor of it.
He was pushing it more, I thought, for PS Jones. I thought, that's where the request came from. I'm not saying he was pushing it. I don't guess Joe was pushing it for anybody, but isn't that where it all started? Didn't it all start at PS Jones?
Well, I thought it was, there was only one principal that really had.
That was communicated, uh, one principal.
Right, there was only one principal. So where I'm coming from, because I'm mixed feelings, just like you. Where I'm coming from is if there's only one principal that doesn't want it, and the others do, I want to make sure that I'm voting in the way that they're comfortable. And if, I, that's, that's my point in it. And so did I read Joe wrong?
Oh, I don't know who you read wrong, but let me just tell you this. In the next few weeks, if you go do that, put your search deeper than the principals. Because the principals and the ADs don't look at this the same way. I can go and tell you that, too. Because I've, just like Butch, I've already talked to some of them. And I can tell you, the school, I'm not going to right now, but there are schools that the principal and the ADs have different opinions on.
It's just me?
So, you might want to, I'm just saying, just, I'm just saying, carry your search deeper than the principals. Have we talked to other counties that have sixth graders playing that are similar size to us?
Other than Pitt County.
The only I know, one that I know is Pitt County. I've got a superintendent's meeting tomorrow, and I can ask a little bit, but I haven't dug into this at all.
I'm sure the competition over there is a lot, just based off.
Let's just hold off on this line, one line item, and just wait till the next meeting, get more information.
Yeah, if you ask the other superintendents, and Pitt County's the only one really doing it, I'm, I'm like, y'all, we don't need to do it, because they do it. We need to do it for the right reasons.
Need a motion table? Yep.
Alright, so moved.
Alright, got a motion. Alright, all in favor, table this item, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, it's tabled to the next meeting, okay? Alright, field trips, Dr. Phipps.
Two of them are listed here. First one at the bottom, Northside High School, June 16th through the 22nd, going to Fayetteville State for their ROTC Officer Leadership Camp. They do this each year, appropriate number of chaperones, and they'll have other folks that will be there at the camp. And then PS Jones, they do this early for approval. This is May the 1st through the 3rd next year. This is a Washington DC trip for eighth graders. They've done this for a couple of years, very successful trip. But they need advanced time to be able to raise funds and make sure they get the charter bus set up. I'd like to present both of these for your approvals.
Okay.
Same move.
Second. Alright, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Alright, Dr. Phipps.
Next, we do this each year. This is requesting Beaufort County Schools Board of Education grant superintendent authority to act as its fiscal agent in applying for federal funds and grants from the US Department of Education for the 2018-19 school year.
Okay.
Same move.
Alright, motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Will we have to amend that after Don wins?
I just put superintendent.
But I mean, we won't, okay. It'd be interim at that point. Okay.
Who's ever acting in that role?
Right. Okay. Alright, item 6, Discussion No Action.
We added a 5.1.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Okay.
And that is just a request to you all, and I've gone back and looked at our hours, and we can do this, to allow us to have an early release day on the last day of school. And I said originally, two hours. We've normally done three hours, so I'd like to ask for three-hour early release, the last day of school. We have plenty of time to let parents know. We can deduct the three hours from what we're required to have, and we're well within where we need to be.
Seven seconds.
Okay. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay. That is, okay. Discussion, No Action, Grants. Ms. Mark?
Yes, sir. Just wanted to make the board aware that Beaufort County Schools and the Beaufort County Community College are entering into a joint grant funding opportunity, hoping to get $80,000 to expand coding into the high schools. A lot of the coding that you saw tonight, that Amy Bennett was doing at EdTech. This would be at Northside, Southside, Washington, and EdTech, along with Beaufort Community College. And there'd be opportunity for teachers and instructors at both places to get training, to get materials. Wendy Peddaway is the person that's been leading that for us, and she has been at the grant. We're just waiting for approval now, but just want to make you aware and hope that we can bring back some good news later.
Okay. Alright, good enough. Alright. Item 7, Closed Session. I need a motion to go into closed session. Thank you. Don't touch your mic.
Thank you. I move that we go into closed sessions pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A1, to prevent disclosure of confidential personal files under General Statute 115C-321, and in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the board, which privilege is hereby acknowledged.
Second. Alright, got a motion and a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, folks, we're back in open session. First item of business is to approve personnel agenda that was presented earlier.
And I am going to recuse myself from the contract extensions due to, I have relatives on the list, so.
And I'm not, and I moved that we approve that.
Second. Alright, got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anything else we got? Nope? Okay, good enough. Alright, next thing is calendar, June. Okay, let's look at that, 9.1.
We've got June the 5th and the 19th as our two meetings. And we normally do a closeout for finance. Can we go ahead and schedule that for the 27th? I'll be gone on the 28th, and Mark will be gone on the 28th. That'll be June the 27th.
I'll be gone that entire week.
Okay. That's just to do final closeouts for finance.
June 27?
Yeah, it'll be a very short meeting.
When you're in high school, it's the 27th.
That'll be my last time.
The last day, the 27th.
On Wednesday?
Do it 5:30.
What time?
5:30. It shouldn't take very long. And then we normally do one meeting in July. And the request was, could that be made July the 17th, which sticks it right in the middle of the month? Would that be okay with everybody?
We may have to go back and look at it and see.
You may have some meetings going on.
Yeah, I'll write it down before I, you know, this is as in.
Is it possible that I could get you to meet with us before you leave?
She said July 17th?
Oh, sure. Yeah, just let you know.
Okay, we, Mark will do that open over there.
It's, it's all pretty jam-packed. You tell me what day, and I'll make it work.
Jam-packed?
This time of year, yes ma'am.
When was that meeting, the 27th?
You wanna do it in June?
That's fine, 27th, 17th. Tell me your date.
That's better than.
July 17th.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, okay.
Second week of June is really good. Teacher work day.
June 27th.
What does that work look like for you?
The only day I can't is the 13th.
The only day you can't is the 13th?
Right.
Okay. Well, what about the, what about the, the 12th? Is the 12th okay?
Works for me.
June 12th?
5:00.
Okay.
I just want to give the committee opportunities to say goodbye.
Okay.
Okay, alright. And I just want to let everybody know, I've already talked to Ms. Booth. I will be out of state. I'll be in California the week of June the 5th, so she will be covering the meeting that night on June 5th, okay? Just wanted everybody to know. I'm not on vacation.
One servant?
Work-related. Okay? Sounds good, though. Okay. I just want to let y'all know. Alright. Okay, Board Member Updates. Anybody got anything?
I, I, we'll say it again and again and again, but I do, since it's being official tonight, do want to thank Dr. Phipps for all of his years of servicing.
Oh, yeah.
And I have enjoyed, when I came on as a new board member, he was so patient with me, and I appreciate it.
As I said before, it'll be Beaufort County's loss, Caldwell's.
It sure is.
That's right. Alright, Superintendent Update?
Just want to remind folks, testing coming up, and anybody who's willing to serve as a proctor could be used at probably any school, so contact your principal if you're willing to serve.
Willing to serve. Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up? Alright, Ms. Booth?
I make a motion and a second.